I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, anyone in the public which should speak on item number one?
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Corn, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Will you oppose? All right, Ms. Vera, let me do item number one.
My pleasure, Mr. Chair. I move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption organs relating to an area rezoning in a general vicinity of 1910 North Ola Avenue, 1810, 1812, 1901, 1903, 2003, 2006, and 2008, North Highland Avenue, 119, 201, 203, and 215, West Oak Avenue, 1906, and 1912, North Tampa Street, and 202 West Seventh Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, from zoning district classification PDA, Plan Development Alternative, RM 24, residential multifamily, CG Commercial General, and CI Commercial Intensive, zoning district classification PDA, Plan Development Alternative, providing for notice, providing an effective date.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Vera, second by Mr. Miranda, roll call vote.
Warren?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Ruddick?
Yes.
Capeen?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
And Vera?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, we go to item number two.
Good evening, Council, Kristina Mora, Legal Department. This also went to the CRA this morning. This is a development agreement that coincides with the area-wide rezoning. You just moved forward. As I mentioned, there is a substitute that has been sent to the clerk's office. It's just to recognize that change schedule for the transportation and the ownership and maintenance agreement, so it's incorporated and everything agrees with one another. I'm available if you have any questions regarding this.
Any questions from council? Okay, anyone in the public which should speak on item number two? Will you oppose?
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Will you oppose?
Substitute residential.
All right, we got to get a second.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Suarez, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Will you oppose? All right, motion carried.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, all right, the other items at six o'clock, and so we got 20 minutes. So we stand to reset for 20 minutes. Roll call.
Suarez?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Maniscalco?
Here.
Capeen? Miranda?
Here.
Vera? And Ruddick?
Here.
All right.
If I could, I'd like to open up meetings, items four through 14, I believe, second.
Yeah, four through 14.
Okay, we got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Corn, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, item number three, a staff report.
Good evening, Council, Kristina Mora, Legal Department. Here on a staff report regarding the automatic reductions to save 34-inch larger trees that were discussed on December 6th, staff report. We take the following view, as a couple of definitions, one, the specimen tree that is a 24-inch or larger tree that would otherwise, it's one of the species that would, in the future, qualify as grand. We've also added a definition for tree removal zone, eligible lots. Those are the lots that will be eligible for the tree removal zone, as well as the new automatic setback reductions.
Thank you. The definition has a exception for the Parkland Estates, which we discussed on the December 6th item. Parkland Estates has a state law that makes them very unique in terms of application of these various code provisions, so we felt that they could be accepted safely from these provisions, and that is included in this draft.
Yeah, Ms. Mora, just to be clear, if we were to move forward with this, we have to transmit this to the Planning Commission, correct?
That's correct.
That would be our next move?
That's correct, Councilman.
All right, thank you.
And just going very briefly through these changes, it does have an opportunity for a design exception, too, for a 25 percent side yard, with the criteria that it has to be in order to preserve a specimen or grand tree, as discussed on December 6th. And then the final change is an automatic reduction of 25 percent for front and corner yards, one foot for side yards, 40 percent reduction for rear yards, and a 10 percent increase of building height, again, in order to save a specimen or grand tree. So these are significant reductions, they will be automatic without any notice or an opportunity for appeal. So if this is, meets council's, if this meets what council wants to do, then your next step, as Councilman Cohen noted, would be to transmit this to the Planning Commission this evening.
All right, any questions from council?
I would move to transmit.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Corn, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll go to public here at six o'clock. Any house cleaning you need to do?
Yes, sir, Mary Saminiego, Land Development Corporation, items nine and 10. They did not effectively complete their notice, so they will have to be re-nodiced. I know they're planning on notifying for the February 14th City Council Evening Meeting. Other than that, all other items are ready to be heard.
Motion to move, please.
Second.
Nine and 10.
All right, got a motion. Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, anyone going to speak on item four through 14, please stand to be sworn.
Do you swear your firm's self-proof, the whole proof, nothing but proof?
Okay, item number four.
Mary Saminiego, item number four is REZ 18109. It's a rezoning request for the property at 1745 West Hillsborough Avenue, from Commercial General and RS 50 to Commercial General.
Good evening, Council members, Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. This is located in the University Planning District. It is served by, there's a bus stop about approximately 250 feet away, at this corner, right here. It's an evacuation zone D. This is the aerial, it's located along Hillsborough Avenue. There's a Wawa right across the street. This is a storage facility, so there's a great commercial presence along Hillsborough Avenue already. And the adopted future land use is Community Commercial 35, which is that red that we see along Hillsborough Avenue. As we move north from the subject site, this is Residential 20, and then Residential 10, providing that transition. Staff did find this consistent with the comprehensive plan, as CG is an allowable use, or allowable zoning district in that Community Commercial 35, and this is along the commercial corridor. We found that it would be comparable and compatible. Thank you so much, I'm available for any questions.
As I stated, Mary Saminiego, this is an application to rezon the property from Commercial General and RS 50 to Commercial General. The subject property is in green, it's on West Hillsborough Avenue, and it backs up against West Mohawk Avenue. It actually currently has split zoning, so the southern half is already Commercial General, the northern half is in the RS 50 zoning district. They're wanting to have the entire property zoned Commercial General in order to use the entire property for Commercial General uses. Here's the subject property from Hillsborough Avenue. This is across the street, the Wawa, to the east, further to the east, and then back next door to the west of the subject property. As you can see, these are a series, it's a commercial corridor, another commercial use. This is the subject property, the back of it, from Mohawk. And then these are the residential houses that face the back of the property along Mohawk. As I stated, this is a Euclidean rezoning district, so there are no waivers or site plans to approve tonight. Any development that were to happen on this property would have to comply with all CG's standards, as well as all development standards found in Chapter 27 and applicable sections of the City of Tampa Code. The overall property is a little over half an acre, it's about five lots down from the intersection of West Hillsborough Avenue and West Rome Avenue intersection, and it has 115 feet of lot width, both on Hillsborough and Mohawk. It meets the minimum lot size and the minimum lot width standards for that zoning district. And the Development Review Compliance Staff found it consistent with the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Any questions from council?
Thank you.
All right, applicant?
Hi, good evening, Rulon Dona. I'm here to rezon the property, as they showed there, and the zoning is, we are requesting to rezon the half north portion, that is RS 50, to CG Commercial General. And that's all the request. If you have any question? Right now, this portion is vacant lot.
Any questions from council? Anyone in the public which should speak on item number four?
Will you oppose?
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Will you oppose? All right, Mr. Miranda.
Thanks, Chairman. Item number four, file number REZ 18-109. Ordnance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of 1745 West Hillsborough Avenue, in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification, RS 50, residential single-family, and CG Commercial General, to CG Commercial General, providing an effective date.
Second. All right, got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carried, with Capeen being abstinent vote. Second reading and adoption will be on February 7th, 2019, at 9:30 a.m.
Okay, item number five.
Mary Saminiego, item number five is REZ 18111. It's for the property located at 3613 West Anderson Avenue. It's a rezoning request from RS 60 to RS 50.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. This is in South Tampa, it's an evacuation zone B. Gaston Park is the closest public recreational facility, and we have a heart route that connects the subject site downtown Tampa. This is the subject site right here. This is Anderson Avenue, it's just south of Inner Bay, and then here's South Del Mayberry Highway. I have a Circle K on the corner, and a Dollar General in the vicinity, and then these are single-family detached homes. Here's the future land use, the adopted future land use is Residential 10. Along South Del Mayberry Highway, we have that Community Commercial 35, that's that pink, representing the commercial uses. This is recreational open space, which is, I believe, Gaston Park, to the east of the subject site, and there are some light industrial uses to the south, that's that gray color. Staff did find this consistent with the comprehensive plan. The Residential 10 allows for those 10 dwelling units per acre, as the density. If this request is approved today, the subject site would be at an overall density of 6.9 units per acre. We did find that this would be comparable and compatible with the surrounding development pattern, and compatible with that future land use, underlying future land use designation. Thank you.
Mary Saminiego, here's a zoning map of the property. The subject property is in green. As you can see, it's in the RS 60 zoning district. As you can also see, there have been a series of rezonings in this area to reduce the lot size down below the RS 60 standards. Here is the subject property. We're going to go east, and then kind of, let me show you. Here's the subject property, we're going to go east, and then cross the street, and kind of look at the surrounding houses. So here's your subject property. These are all taken from the street. This is at 3611, to the east, further to the east. Now we cross the street, we're coming back towards the subject property. You can see the spacing of the houses between each other. Still across the street, single-family houses. Then this is to the west of the property, and then next door directly to the west. Whenever we have a rezoning request to go from RS 60 to RS 50, we do a map that shows the development pattern in the immediate area. For this study, the red are commercial lots, so those were not included, and then the yellow color are townhomes, so those weren't included in this overall study. A total of 112 lots were analyzed, 27 of which are equal to or greater than 60-foot wide lots, leaving 73, or a majority of which less than 60 feet wide. Of the subject block, which is this entire block, there are 41 lots, 22 of which are 60 feet wide or greater, and then the remaining 78 percent are less than 60 feet wide. For the subject block face, which is this northern side of Anderson Avenue, there are 21 total lots, 19 of which are 60 feet wide or wider, and the remaining 81 percent is less than 60 feet wide. And then for this block, this 3,600 block, being the block face, as well as across the street, there are 40 lots, 33 percent are 60 feet wide or larger, and then the remaining 67 percent are less than 60 feet wide. As you can see, in all four categories that were analyzed, every one had overwhelming majority of lots less than 60 feet wide. The total lot is 12,500 square feet, and it is 100 feet wide, so if approved, the RS 50 zoning district could be split into two lots. This is Euclidean rezoning, so there's no site plan review and no waivers to consider. Any, there are no additional comments from the Development Review Compliance Staff. Any development that were to occur on this property would have to comply with all applicable zoning standards of the RS 50 zoning district. After the analysis, the Development Review Compliance Staff reviewed the application and found it consistent with the overall development pattern, as well as the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances.
Any questions for staff?
Thank you.
Any applicant?
Good evening, Council, Steve McClellan, I'm representing Karina Hess, who's the petitioner on this project. Basically, this restores the 1946 original plat that were 50-foot lots, and in this case, it will allow for the redevelopment of these two particular lots we're requesting, and there will be no waivers because it's Euclidean zoning. And as the staff has pointed out in all four categories, including block face, area, the street frontage, are all in excess of 50-foot development, like 70, I think 70 percent are all developed in 50-foot configurations. This lies between Del Mayberry and Heims, just south of Inner Bay Boulevard, and the area has experienced a great deal of infill and redevelopment recently. So basically, the staff is recommending that this is consistent on both the Planning Commission and the city staff, and I'll be happy to answer any questions for you regarding this project, but we respectfully request your approval.
Any questions for the applicant? Anyone in the public which should speak on item number five? Will you oppose?
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Corn, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, Mr. Maniscalco, did you read item number five?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I have an ordinance, rezoning property in the general vicinity of 3613 West Anderson Avenue, in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification, RS 60, residential single-family, to RS 50, residential single-family, providing an effective date.
Second. All right, got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Corn, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carried, with Capeen being abstinent vote. Second reading and adoption will be held on February 7th, 2019, at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you very much, Council.
Item number six.
Mary Saminiego, item number six is REZ 18114. It's a rezoning request for 3511 West Empedrato Street, from RM 16 to RM 18.
Good evening, Council, this is located in South Tampa, it's an evacuation zone C. Corona Park is the closest public recreational facility. I have an aerial for you. I'm not great at pronouncing the street name, but this, here it is, right here. I also have South Heims Avenue and West Bay to Bay Boulevard to the south, and this is the subject site. This is a church to the south, along West Bay to Bay Boulevard, and we also have some commercial uses in this area. This portion of the street, we have some attached townhomes, some duplexes, kind of a mix of those residential types, which is reflected on our future land use map. It's Residential 20, which allows for that medium density. Residential to the north, that orange is Residential 10. I have Community Mix Use 35 along West Bay to Bay Boulevard, and then the yellow is Residential 6. The Residential 20 category does provide for that sensitive transition between this Residential 10 and the Community Commercial 35, as we move north from West Bay to Bay Boulevard. And this rezoning request is within that intent of that Residential 20, keeping with that medium-density residential category. So we did find this consistent, we also found that it would further the policy direction to make an effective use of underutilized land, and increase the available housing in this area of the city. And I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Mary Saminiego, for the record, this is the zoning map of the subject property is in green, it's currently in the RM 16 zoning district, they're requesting to go to the RM 18 zoning district. Because of the size of the lot, it's only .11 acres, and they currently have two dwelling units on the site. They're below the acreage that they need to have two conforming, the second unit is non-conforming, and per the non-conforming chapter, they're severely limited on what they can do to that second unit. They can't expand it, they can't enlarge it, they can only do basic repairs. With the RM 18 zoning district, that would give them full two dwelling units, so they could exercise their property rights to fully execute a second dwelling unit, as opposed to getting locked into the existing structure and the existing unit that's there now. Here's the subject property, here is directly to the east. Across the street is a very large church facility. Let me show you. It's this entire block on the south side of Empedrato, and then to the west is another single-family house. Again, this is a Euclidean rezoning, any development, if this rezoning were to be approved, would have to comply with all of the RM 18 zoning standards. The Development Review Compliance Staff found it consistent with the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances. Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Nope? Okay.
All right, petitioner?
My name is Michael Satin, I own the property at 3511 West Empedrato Street, in question, and I'm hoping that you would grant my request to rezon it to RM 18.
Any question for the petitioner? Anyone in the public which should speak on item number six?
Will you oppose?
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Corn, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, Mr. Corn, did you read item number six?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I read and present, an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance, rezoning property in the general vicinity of 3511 West Empedrato Street, in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classification, RM 16 residential multifamily, to RM 18 residential multifamily, providing an effective date.
Second. All right, got a motion from Mr. Corn, second by Mr. Miranda, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carried, with Capeen being abstinent vote. Second reading and adoption will be held on February 7th, 2019, at 9:30 a.m.
Item number seven.
Mary Saminiego, item number seven on your agenda this evening is REZ 18115. It's a rezoning request from RS 50 to RM 18, at the property at 8714 North Tampa Street.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. This is going to look very familiar, this came before you as a comprehensive plan amendment. It was part of the February 2018 cycle, I believe it came before you last June. It's on North Tampa Street, it's about a block away from North Florida Avenue, this is a Home Depot parking lot, these are commercial uses right here, and then residential uses as we move away from it. It is located in the University Planning District, evacuation zone E. On your future land use map, we have the Community Mix Use 35, which is that Home Depot parking lot, I pointed out earlier, Community Commercial 35. This is Residential 20. As part of the request that was before you last year, this block was changed to the Residential 20, future land use designation, so that's now the adopted future land use of the subject site, and then as we move further, it transitions to that Residential 10. The staff did find this request consistent, we did find that this provides a logical transition in density as we move away from North Florida Avenue. It's still that medium-density residential district, so we did find that it would be consistent, comparable, and compatible with those surrounding uses. And I am available for any questions, thank you.
Mary Saminiego, here is the zoning map, the subject property is in green, as you can see, it's in a large area of the RS 50 zoning district, and then it goes to Commercial Intensive along Florida Avenue. As Jennifer stated, this went through, this portion of the block went through a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use to R 20, which allows consideration of multifamily density in zoning districts. The current property is a house, and then behind it is a semi-detached structure, equalling three total dwelling units, that are all legal non-conforming. Again, like the last case, when a structure and/or use of legal non-conforming, the property owners are limited as to what can be done with that use and/or structures. If this rezoning were to be approved to RM 18, they are allowed to have two dwelling units total, the existing house will remain, and then the semi-detached structure in the back will be converted into, into one dwelling unit, leaving two total dwelling units on the site. Sorry about that. Here's the subject property, here's the house in the front, and the two family units in the back that'll be converted to a house, or a single dwelling. To the north of the property at 8716, across the street, all single-family houses. There's no site plan review and no waivers. If the rezoning were to be approved, they would have to comply with all RM 18 zoning standards, there are no additional comments from staff, and the Development Review Compliance Staff found it consistent with the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances. Do you have any questions for me?
Any question for the staff?
Thank you.
Petitioner?
Good evening, I'm Christina Mendoza Justignano, I'm the property owner of 8714 North Tampa Street. I'm here to respectfully ask for your approval to rezon our property. We've owned this property for two years, we've got approved by the plan amendment, and hopefully you will take that in consideration to rezon my property. Thank you, any questions for me?
Any question for the petitioner? Anyone in the audience which should speak on item number seven?
Will you oppose?
Second. Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, Mr. Suarez?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Present an ordinance for first reading consideration. An ordinance, rezoning property in the general vicinity of eight-seven-one-four North Tampa Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification RS fifty residential, single family, to RM eighteen residential multifamily, providing an effective date.
Second. All right, got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Motion carried with capin being abstinent vote. Second reading and adoption to be held on February seventh, two thousand nineteen at nine thirty a.m.
All right, item number eight.
Item number eight, Mary Samaniego. Item number eight is REZ eighteen one eighteen for a rezoning from OP to CG Commercial General. The property is at twenty-eight twelve and twenty-eight fourteen West Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard.
Jennifer Malone with your planning commission staff. This is located in central Tampa. Three transit routes serve the subject site, connecting it to a variety of destinations. We are at West Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. To the north is St. Joseph's Hospital, as well as this parcel to the, I don't know my directions tonight, to the west. And then this is the subject site right here. There's a variety of medical office uses along this corridor of West Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. This is reflected on the future land use map. The blue is public. That's the public uses of the hospital. This is community mixed-use thirty-five, residential twenty to the south, and then that residential ten. We're seeing that transition in density as it moves south. Commercial General is an allowable zoning district in this area. Staff found no concerns with this request, given the development pattern and what's surrounding the area. So that is our finding, and I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Mary Samaniego, for the record, here's the zoning map of the surrounding area. The subject property is in green. It's zone Office Professional. Across the street is St. Joseph's Hospital, which is Office Professional One. And on either side of the property, to the east and to the west, is already the Commercial General zoning district for which the applicant is requesting CG zoning for themselves. South of the property is residential office, and then it starts on the south side of Virginia, starts transitioning into just some medical office uses and residential. There are two separate addresses as part of this singular rezoning request. This is twenty-eight fourteen and twenty-eight twelve, existing medical uses. To the east is a Med Express. Across the street is St. Joseph's Hospital, currently under construction, obviously. And then to the west is a Checkers Restaurant, with the construction workers from St. Joseph's having lunch there.
So do I. That's the road and the medical facilities.
The total property is point eight seven acres. If this property, the existing uses were developed in nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy-six, if the property was to be rezoned to Commercial General, they would have to comply with all the Commercial General's district zoning standards. They meet the minimum lot size, minimum lot areas for the Commercial General zoning district to be developed together or separately. City staff had no further questions or concerns with this application, and the Development Review and Compliance Staff found it consistent with the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances. Do you have any specific questions?
Any questions for the staff?
Thank you.
Petition?
Good evening. My name is Tara Tedrow. I'm an attorney at Lounge Drawstick, two and five North Yola Drive, Orlando, Florida, here on behalf of the property owner. We appreciate staff's assistance with this rezoning request. Staff has found it to be consistent with your land development code, as well as with your comprehensive plan. We agree with the findings of your staff. We're requesting no waivers today, and we actually received an unsolicited letter of support from a neighboring property owner at two-eight-zero-eight West Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. So we would request that you, request approval tonight for our rezoning, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the petition? Mr. Suarez?
What is being planned for that particular location?
So it's interesting, because currently there's a pharmacy on the site, but if you look at your use table, a pharmacy under the OP zoning has to be an accessory use.
Right.
So, you know, to bring it in line with what the current code would allow, since these were built a really long time ago, and to give some options for marketability of the property, we found consistent with the development pattern in the area that the CG zoning would be the best option for the site.
Okay, so there's been no decision as to the type of development that they're going to put in there?
I don't handle the real estate portion. Yeah, just the land use portion.
Okay, no problem. I'm just curious if you knew anything from the owner's perspective what they were going to do there?
Sure. Yeah, they've been looking at a couple different options for the site, but again, without the rezoning request, we're unable to solidify anything that can go there.
I got you.
So we appreciate your consideration. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer those.
All right. In addition to questions, comments to the petition. Anyone in the public who should speak on item number eight?
Close.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Moranis, second by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, Mr. Vio, let you read number eight.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance, rezoning property in general vicinity of twenty-eight twelve and twenty-eight fourteen West Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification OP, Office Professional to CG Commercial General, providing an effective date.
Second. Second. I got a motion from Mr. Vio, second by Mr. Moranis. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Motion carried with capin being abstinent vote. Second reading and adoption to be held on February seventh, two thousand nineteen at nine thirty a.m.
Okay, go to item number eleven.
Mary Samaniego, item number eleven is REZ eighteen one hundred. It's a rezoning from plan development to plan development at the properties located at forty-seven zero seven, forty-seven thirteen, and forty-seven seventeen, West McCoy Street.
Good evening, counsel. Jennifer Malone with your planning commission staff. This is in the South Tampa Planning District. It is within a coastal high hazard area and evacuation zone A. Port Tampa Park and the Port Tampa Community Center are about point two miles to the east. That's a close public recreational facility, and Hart Route seventeen provides transit to the subject site. Here's where it's located. We're at Southwest Shore, at the corner of Southwest Shore Boulevard and West McCoy Street. Directly to the north is a multifamily development, some multifamily development further north in this direction, the subject site. These are CSX tracks right here, and this is a portion of Port Tampa Park to the south. The adopted future land use is transitional use twenty-four. That's the salmon color in this area. The apartments to the north were developed under that same future land use category. This is the subject site right here. They also have residential twenty, residential thirty-five, residential ten in the area. This is the park. It's recreational open space. We did find this consistent. The transitional use twenty-four is a unique category. It was originally placed in areas of the city that didn't have an identifiable development pattern. However, in this immediate surrounding area, especially in South Tampa, staff has found that parcels with this designation are being redeveloped for moderate-density residential, such as that parcel to the north that has the same future land use category. So we did find that this would be consistent with the underlying future land use and the surrounding development pattern. But the TU twenty-four is a unique category that allows for a lot of different zoning districts, which we've seen in other areas of the city. But we did find that it was comparable and compatible and consistent with that policy direction that also encourages utilizing vacant land to further the preferences of Tampa's, for the housing for its future residents. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Mary Samaniego, here is the zoning map. The subject property is in green. As you can see, it's part of a larger plan development. The larger plan development was approved in two thousand eleven. It was KC eleven forty-six for multifamily development, and then this portion was slated to be commercial and retail. The property is currently vacant, and it's been vacant since two thousand eleven. So the property owners are wanting to convert this piece to multifamily, actually to single-family attached, to kind of close out the entire development for residential purposes. Here is the subject property. It's exactly one acre. As you can see, it's vacant. Here's the subject property from McCoy. This is the apartment development that, again, was the initial larger phase of the two thousand eleven plan development. You're showing the gates. This is all taken from McCoy. Across McCoy is some open storage and a single-family house. And then on the corner, the opposite corner of West Shore and McCoy, some residential units. Similarly, some residential units directly across the street on West Shore. And then this is to the north of West Shore, the West Shore side of, again, the existing plan development for the apartments. Here's the site plan the applicant is proposing. They're requesting a total of twenty-three dwelling units, which is allowable under their current future land use designation. A series of buildings, there's four, I'm sorry, there's five in this building, five in this, four, five and four. They are asking for a number of waivers, and I'll kind of walk you through those. They're asking for one hundred percent tree reduction. Because they're an acre, all properties an acre or large are required to maintain fifty percent of the existing trees. They're asking for a waiver to remove all existing trees. Staff is not in support of this waiver. We feel the applicant could have designed a project to retain some of the existing trees on-site. They are also asking to pay into the Trees Trust Fund for section thirteen one sixty-five D, because of the limited space they have for the mitigation and the required tree planting. They are required to replace the trees they're removing, as well as to put in some parking lot trees and landscaping for the project itself. There's very limited green space left on the property. These are sidewalks. These are sidewalks to the doors. So the only green space you have are kind of limited areas that would not meet the protective radii requirement for new plantings. Due to that, they're asking for a waiver to pay into the Trees Trust Fund for trees not mitigated on-site. The third waiver, and they have a total of seven waivers for this application, third waiver, there's a code provision for building separation based on the height of the buildings and the lengths of the buildings. And there's a formula that we use that's built into the code. The height of these buildings they're proposing is thirty-five feet. Because of the calculations, these buildings are all kind of too close to each other. I won't go through the exact numbers, but buildings two and five are supposed to be twenty-three and a half feet. They're only twenty feet apart. Two and four are supposed to be twenty-three and a half. They're only twenty feet apart. So basically, there's a waiver request kind of to allow for these buildings to be closer. The fourth waiver is the section twenty-seven two eighty-two point nine to allow the front doors of these buildings to not face a right-of-way. Again, we have West Shore over here, and then McCoy down here. These units all face McCoy. These face West Shore with their front doors, but these units, the front doors, actually face the rear of the property or actually face the existing apartment buildings. So that requires another waiver. They're asking for a waiver from twenty-seven two eighty-three twelve to reduce the drive aisle from twenty-four, twenty-four feet to twenty feet. I believe it is in this area here. And there's a twenty-foot drive aisle here, but they have recessed the garage door, so I believe that they need it in that location. To redo, another waiver, twenty-seven two eighty-five to reduce the vehicle use area of green space requirement. Because of the amount of internal drive aisles and parking, they're required to have sixteen hundred seventy-three square feet of green space, and they're only providing twelve hundred ninety-three square feet of green space. So if that waiver were to be approved, they'd have to pay into the green space fund for District Six. And the last waiver is to reduce the VUA green space buffer from three feet to one foot along the north property line, again, subject to the fee and lieu payment for District Six. They're required to be three feet. They're only measure about one foot there. The setbacks that they're proposing, west fourteen feet, north ten feet, east five feet, and south fourteen, as I stated, they are at a thirty-five-foot maximum height. A total of fifty-two parking spaces are provided, which include guest parking spaces, and they are providing all fifty-two required parking spaces on-site through a combination of garage spaces as well as surface parking. If approved, there are changes that staff is recommending to clean up the site plan between first and second reading, land development. Land development, because of the nature and the number of waivers they're requesting, and given the site is vacant, land development did find this inconsistent. Natural Resources also found it inconsistent because of exceeding the fifty percent tree removal, asking to remove all trees on-site. Transportation found it inconsistent because of the drive aisle width. They're required to be twenty-four feet wide. They're asking for a waiver to go down to twenty feet.
Mr. Corn.
I'd like you to finish.
Thank you. And those are all the changes between first and second reading. Overall, the Development Review and Compliance Staff found it inconsistent, again, reference to transportation for drive aisle width, natural resources, and land development due to tree preservation and green space provision. In the event that the council approves the waivers, please make a motion to have the changes made between first and second reading further revision sheet. Mr. Cohen?
We think that we did this in two thousand eleven. I think it was done by this, by some of us that are sitting up here. But do you have a little history of what the full PD was that was approved in two thousand eleven? How did this piece fit into the other two pieces that were approved?
So this is the larger, Jennifer, can I borrow your aerial, please? So this is the overall PD that was first approved in oh seven and then revised in two thousand eleven. I believe that, thanks, it was kind of broken up into two sections. This section was always supposed to be multifamily, and then this section was going to have residential and retail uses. I'm sorry, restaurant and retail uses as allowable uses. And I know that the applicant and the applicant's representative can speak in more detail, but it's my understanding and clear that the property is sat empty for the past eight years. So they're wanting to exercise the option to, in effect, revise the proposal to eliminate this from having the option for retail and restaurant and convert it to residential. Any other questions? No. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, counsel. I'm Roy Major. I'm an engineer and a planner with WRA Engineering, representing weekly homes. We're looking to develop twenty-three townhomes on this acre lot. This is the reason why we're in front of you here. And to make that switch from the restaurant use to the residential was beyond the administrative discretion of staff, and so a PD is required. Take a look at the site plan here. And staff, staff went through, you know, the adjacent uses. You have the, you have the Jefferson Townhomes to the north, which is at twenty-four units per acre, and we have twenty-three units per acre. There's higher density suburban residential across the street. To the south of us is currently open storage. However, there's some commercial intensives, some CI, and also TU twenty-four to the south of us. My point here is note that there is no shopping or retail in the direct proximity of this parcel. Also note that the trees along this parcel are all along the western and southern boundary. You know, this parcel was master-planned to be, you know, a commercial use. So it was masqueraded or clear-cut, and it has been in its current state of basically, you know, you say, an acre pasture essentially for seven years. Kind of the point of my presentation is that we feel our townhome project is going to add a complement- add a complimentary alternative housing choice to the area while not adding an additional burden to the area's infrastructure. I just have some statements to make that discussion. Initially, when I say that we're adding another housing choice, I'm referring to adding townhomes in an area here where you have, you have an apartment choice, you have, you know, high-density suburban to north, a little lower density suburban. Now we're also adding townhomes into that residential mix. The concept of having diverse housing options is discussed in the Planning Commission's analysis of our site, and that analysis did yield compliance to their, to the Planning Commission's analysis. When I'm talking about infrastructure and not burdening the infrastructure, you know, think of, think of the main pain points, you know, within the city. Think traffic, congestion, parking, stormwater, okay? In terms of traffic, a 3,500-square-foot restaurant, which is a typical size for a chain restaurant, an Outback, you know, something like that, 3,500-square-foot restaurant generates about 315 daily trips. And I'm quoting from the ITE Traffic Generation methodology. 23 townhomes generates about 134 daily trips. And if you, if you look at a peak hour comparison, a restaurant of that size, 3:00 AM peak trips kind of figures, ours would generate 10, so a little more in the morning. But in the evening, 3,500-square-foot restaurant generates 26 peak PM trips, ours generates 12. My point there is, you know, traffic is about a wash. It could be argued that maybe we're lessening traffic with this proposal, but it's, it's about a wash. Parking, we meet the city criteria for parking. Two-car garages, we meet the requisite amount of guest spaces. And then stormwater, drainage issues. This site, the apartments and this site, was master planned for development. So there's, we're going to tap into their stormwater vault system. There's currently an inlet and a pipe and a stub out to this site. So there will be no off-site drainage coming off our site into any, into any outfall except where it's currently planned. So my point here is that we're putting 23 townhomes in place of a restaurant. You know, the traffic consideration is a wash, but we know off-site drainage considerations and we meet parking. So kind of three of the main pain points of development in the city of Tampa are being We are asking for several waivers, clearly, clearly. And just a base discussion on that, our request is based on the assertion our project is in harmony with the overall character of this area. You talk about tree removal and green space. Again, looking at the perimeter of this site, the trees are more or less along the right-of-way. And so we will be removing those trees, several of which are cabbage palms. There's some pretty nice pines, unfortunately, you know, we'd have to remove those. Staff has indicated that our mitigation would be 13 2-inch trees. We may be able to place many of those trees along the eastern, along this eastern boundary. It's not on our site, but it's part of kind of the private right-of-way of the apartments. We may be able to mitigate as much as possible onsite. We are perfectly willing to do that. You know, another discussion about green space. We met the 350 per square foot green space criteria. We're coming up about 375 feet, square feet short on our vehicular use green space. Looking at the character of the area, you look at the apartments to the north, look to the housing on the east, you know, us being 375 feet short on an acre site, we don't feel has a real dramatic impact upon the character of the area. You know, another, another item, we talked about the waivers for the drive aisle and some of the other considerations. I'm going to switch over to the, our actual site plan. So the drive aisle width, the drive aisle width is 20 feet throughout the site. However, between the garage door and the drive aisle, there's a three-foot apron. So someone who's pulling in or backing out has 23 feet of space. And if you actually measured it to garage door to garage door, there's 26 feet. I'd also point out that 20 feet, two 10-foot lanes is a very common roadway width for local roads. While not in the city, but we do, I do a lot of work in counties. For a subdivision road, 20 feet wide is kind of the standard. So I think we meet many of the standards for drive aisle width, plus the apron makes this palatable. Transportation's, excuse me, I'm sorry. So transportation objection is correct, however, we feel, we feel we meet that. Regarding building separation, indeed, Between Buildings 2 and 3 are 10 feet apart. By the, by the city formula, they have to be a little over 14 feet. Buildings 2 and 5 and 2 and 4 should be about 23 and a half feet apart, I believe they're, you know, they're about 26 feet apart. We missed that by about three and a half feet, excuse me. So, so what I'm saying is our, our building separation does not meet standard, no doubt about it, but we don't feel it makes a tremendous impact upon the character, you know, of the Something that we have done upon kind of discussion with city staff, so you look at this, this area down here where the sidewalks, the entrances of the front doors goes directly to the sidewalk, you know, kind of a rowhouse feel. You know, we took out the perimeter sidewalk along McCoy, so those particular units, you kind of walk right out, you have a little bit of a front yard and then you kind of take some steps right down to the sidewalk, kind of that, that urban, kind of rowhouse feel along McCoy. You know, we think that adds a little bit of character, a little bit of difference to the area. So basically, in conclusion, that we feel we're providing a townhome project which complements the area, provides alternative housing, has a unique design feature with that, with that one section of rowhouse and does not create an adverse impact to the area infrastructure. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Council? Councilman Suarez.
Mr. Major, I've got one question in particular. The project itself, I'm a little bit confused based on the notes and what had been told to us. So the entire development was part of a PD, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. So is this a new owner or is it still the owner of the original PD?
I believe it is the same underlying owner.
Okay. And so the original plan was to have a restaurant or some other type of mixed use here, correct?
It was a restaurant.
It was a restaurant.
Called out specifically as a restaurant.
Okay. And so the decision to go with 23 townhomes, you know, when you go from one type of use on a master plan to something really completely different based on the fact that the restaurant was probably going to serve the larger project, for the most part, and the rest of the surrounding neighborhood, and especially since this particular neighborhood is getting a lot more people moving in, why, why the change now into a, into townhomes as opposed to what was their previous?
You know, and the answer to that, and, and the answer to that is marketability. Is a standalone, by-itself restaurant, more or less 3,500 square feet or whatever it might be, by itself, has no market right now. That's, that was told to me by, by the seller.
When you all were doing this plan, was there any thought into reducing the number of townhome units to allow for some of the green space and some of the other mitigations that you have to provide anyway because of the, the green spaces, the trees? I mean, frankly, based on the, the area of the previous PD and what had built out, there's not a lot of green space at all in that entire project. Has there been any thought in terms of developing part of this, instead of 23, maybe 11 townhomes and, and building a small dog park or some other thing? Or maybe even using that space to have some other kind of multi-use? I'm just curious because, you know, now we're looking at paving in and putting in wall-to-wall townhomes on that, on that parcel of land, based on the number of waivers you have, because you have a lot of waivers. And when I see that many waivers, I'm always wondering, what's the thought process behind developing it?
You know, yes, sir. With, with, you know, the underlying Euclidean zoning being 24 units to the acre, which, you know, what the apartments were designed to, the idea was to get, we got an acre, you know, we can make it work with 23 townhomes.
Right. And it's to maximize the use.
You know, I, I can't mislead you.
Oh, no.
That is, that is the case, sir. You know, and, and I think though, with, the thought process was, you know, that considering, again, the apartments, they had 10 acres, right, there's, there's very little green space. I can't, I don't know if they met their requirement or not. I suspect they probably did.
Yeah.
And so, you know, here we are with one acre. Should we account for the green space of the greater 10 and a half acres? You know? And so we did meet the green space requirement for the, the general green space, it's the vehicular use requirement we're a little shy on. But it's just, you know, sure, the client, my client's trying to, you know, do the best he can. And again, we feel we're in keeping with the, the green space and the character of the area.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Along the same lines, you have received almost a four-star general, three, three departments said that you were inconsistent, you're asking for seven waivers, and I understand the shortages. You say, I'm 350 square foot of an acre, then you say I'm four feet short of a 24-foot drive aisle, which this room is about, I'd say, 26, 27 foot at the widest, not between the columns. And so I'm trying to guess, and then you said, well, you got the sidewalk and the, the entryway, does the code require that to be counted or just the street itself?
Does the code require, Mary Semeniego, does the code require what to be counted?
The width of the back up, 24 foot, the 24 foot.
It has to be drivable area.
Pardon me?
It has to be driveway.
Driveway, not, not, not the sidewalk and not the aisle going in.
No.
All right. And I wanted that to be explicit. I'm not against projects, but I, then you want 100% tree removal, am I correct? And please, you can interrupt me at any time because I'm not perfect when I say these things. Sometimes I err. And so it's just to me, as Mr. Suarez was saying, I understand the development, I understand what's happening there, you know, for a long time, it had been forgotten and then it was recognized 15, 20 years ago and it's continued to be recognized and I'm appreciative of that. But the 24 to an acre, it depends what the acre looks like. It depends where the acre's at, in my, in my judgment. It's just not a set and dry 24. So you're one short of an acre, then a one development unit short of the 24 to an acre code. But I'm looking at it and I say to myself, you know, it's a beautiful area, beautiful location, beautiful development from your own, please don't count that against him. And, and it just, to me, it's just trying to put a gallon of milk into two, you know, half a gallon jug. It quite doesn't look, it looks great, but it quite doesn't fit inside that. That's what I'm saying. Thank you, Chairman.
Could I address a question, sir? You know, in regards, speaking of sidewalk and the drive aisle width, there's no way we're having cars driving over sidewalk.
No, we're not.
No way. What, what the point was is that you have a garage, like a garage door, and then a three-foot apron. And then the drive aisle. And then another three-foot apron. And so, and so what, it's absolutely correct, that the drive aisle is 20 feet. There's no doubt about it.
I, I got those numbers, but you don't turn around in your apron, you turn around on the street.
Correct.
That's why it's supposed to be 24 feet. And I say we haven't made exceptions ever.
Yep.
But I'm saying in this case, he's just asking for a lot. But thank you again. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I have a couple of problems with this. First of all, when this PD was originally done, it was done as part of a larger project. And we all balance everything when we do it. So to come back later and carve out a piece for a change affects the decision-making over the whole. So right away, that elevates this, I think, to a higher standard of scrutiny when we, when we decide how to go forward. You made the comment that the reason you're here for 23 units is because you can make it work. That's the most you can make work. And what I would argue to you is you can't make it work because you're asking for seven waivers, you're busting through all the setbacks, you're putting the buildings closer together than they're supposed to be, and you're removing 100% of the trees. And so one of the themes that I see here from the staff is that they think some of these things could be mitigated if the site were designed differently. Then I think the final thing is, you know, the, the comment about the lack of demand for the restaurant, I think is subjective at best. We have seen some restaurants open in this area that are doing phenomenally well. There's a ton of new people that have moved in and we've seen a lot of increase. So I'm not sure that the intent of the original PD really has been frustrated by market conditions not cooperating. I, I think that, that that's speculation, not fact. So that's all.
All right. You want to, how much time do you have left? All right, you got 2:28. You want to use it?
You know, for Councilman Cohen's comment, you know, I can just tell you what the gentleman I spoke to told me, you know, and so I, so absolutely, you know, can't, can't confirm or deny that. You know, it's, it's, I know this client creates an excellent product, you've seen it come before you before, it's all over Tampa, they like this site, and again, the option of having townhomes, apartments, single-family, I think is attractive to this area. Indeed, we are asking for some waivers, but again, I don't think they detract, you know, from the character of this project. We would appreciate your consideration on those.
Okay. All right. Anyone from the public which should speak on item number 11?
Hello, I'm Tom Vento, 4701 Ingram Street, Port Tampa, also the president of the Civic Association. I'm not very prepared tonight, I've been pretty ill lately and coming back, but one of the things is, the gentleman said there's no shopping or retail or restaurants in the area. That's exactly why that PD was made back in the, in the day in 2007. Of course, the market conditions after 2007, that was the, we're in the bubble burst, 2008. So we're probably getting back to the point now, after all this time, where the market conditions are getting more in line with what they wanted or what was going to be put there as a restaurant. The neighborhood and the owner, who is the same petitioner now, or the, you know, the same person, we went back and forth, worked together for probably, I don't know, a year, year and a half. And they made some changes and this was one of the things that the neighborhood really wanted because we knew that there would come a time like there is right now where everything north of us is developed, we can't drive through, you recapture a lot of the traffic by not having people having to drive to Gandy to go to use a restaurant or retail, whatever, but mainly it was restaurant is what it was for. In fact, there was something about it, it was going to be a sit-down restaurant, it would, I don't even know if that's written in the plan or not, if that ever got through there. In 2011, they actually crowded the apartments towards the road, I wasn't involved at the time, closer to the road, setbacks, some, I guess, waivers, you would say. So that's the history of it. The history was, we worked with the owner to try to get some land that was going to be, that somebody was going to eventually develop as a restaurant to serve the neighborhood. We, in our part of the, that corner of the city, we, we have to drive north through dense, more dense and more dense areas to get, to get, you know, to get a bite to eat or to go shopping. So it was kind of a lot of foresight and I thought it was in good intentions and I don't know, and it feels like we were lied to, but that's, I hope he would deny the change. Thank you.
Callie Denna with Port Tampa. To echo kind of what Tom said, there is no retail restaurants there right now, but there's definitely a need for. there's definitely a need for one. And this was decided back then, and as Councilman Cohen said, since then, there has been more development, and it continues to grow. We do have townhomes, and additional townhomes were recently built with the Marina District, which is getting completed. There are also apartment buildings across the street from the Marina District that are getting completed. There is land just southwest of this vacant lot, and it's zoned and approved for 444 more apartment units. And Lennar is building single-family homes just south of this, 172 of them. So we're going to continue to grow and add more people that could service this restaurant if it stays zoned that way. So I just respectfully ask for you to consider keeping it zoned as it was decided back when it was made this way. Thank you so much.
All right. Anyone else which should speak on item number 11? All right, petitioner, you have rebuttal time?
Thank you. You know, having, having heard public input and the council, I would ask council to consider a, a motion to continue this, and working through some of the comments, not only that we've heard, but through staff analysis, we're going to move for a continuance to help us get this site more to compliance and reduce the waivers.
Mr. Suarez.
And, you know, Mr. Mazer, if, you know, based on some of the comments that my, myself and my colleagues have made, and what the neighborhood has said, you may want to go back to your client and work with them. I would suggest meeting with them to talk about some of the issues and how this can become a more, you know, successful project for you. So I will make that motion to continue if you're done, sir, with any of your...
I'll second it.
Okay.
Well, how many, what period of time?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Ms. Semeniego, I think, has something to say. I'm not sure what it is.
Ms. Semeniego, I wanted to speak about the continuance. I am recommending that we continue it to February 28th, which is an alcohol night. That would give staff enough time, that would give the applicant enough time to fully reconsider a site plan, get it together, give it to staff, and give staff adequate time and code required time to do a thorough review of it. I feel like February 14th would not be enough time.
Providing the petitioner agrees to that, I have no problem. It's up to the petitioner.
February 28th or February 14th, Valentine's Day.
If you, either that or further down, whatever, whatever your choice is, but that'd be the first available slot.
Sure. Mary, what would be one, one, you know, one increment out from March, from the 28th?
The next available hearing after that would be February 14th. No.
March, no, March 14th.
I'm sorry.
March 14th, yeah.
March 14th.
Let's go for that.
Okay. I, I make the motion to have a continuance until March 14th at 6:00 PM.
May I say something on the motion? I'm not going to support it. I think that the, actually, we should vote this down, but whatever the pleasure accounts for.
All right, you got a motion from Mr. Suarez, seconded by Mr. Mancacca, and that is to continue this to March the 14th at 6:00 PM. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Repose?
Aye.
Motion carried. With the subpoena being absent, vote, and Cohen voting no.
Okay. I'll go to item number 12.
Mary Semeniego, item number 12 is REZ 18112. It's a rezoning request for 111 West Genesee Street for the property to be rezoned from Seminole Heights Residential for Seminole Heights Development.
Jennifer Malone with her Planning Commission staff. This is located in the central Tampa Planning District. 400 feet to the east is a transit stop serving Heart Route One, which runs along North Florida Avenue. It's an evacuation zone E. Rivercrest Park is about 3,100 feet to the northwest, and that's the closest public recreational facility. I'm going to show an aerial. This is North Florida Avenue, West Guineese Street, here's the subject site, and North Highland Avenue. It's in the Seminole Heights Urban Village. This is the Blind Tiger Cafe, actually, on this parcel right here. We also have some car lots along this portion of North Florida Avenue, and then the single-family. The adopted future land use is Residential 10, that's that orange color indicative of the neighborhood. The red, which runs along North Florida Avenue, is that community commercial 35, which allows consideration of those commercial, the commercial uses that are along North Florida Avenue, since it is a transit corridor and a heavily used commercial corridor. This rezoning will allow for the, and I'm, Mary will go further into detail about this, but staff reviewed this rezoning, and we did find that it would allow for the adaptive reuse of this existing structure for this, for residential purpose, which is supported by the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. I'm going to cite Land Use Policy 9.2.5 and 5.1.7. This will recognize that unique development pattern in the Seminole Heights Urban Village, and it is compatible with the long-range pattern that the Comprehensive Plan has identified for this area. We did find that this would be, the Comprehensive Plan supports adaptive reuse of these structures. This is going to be comparable and compatible, and especially with those two policies that I cited, which are also in our report, it follows that, that policy guidance within the Comprehensive Plan and the long-term vision of these urban villages, especially that adaptive reuse for residential development. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Mary Semeniego, for the record, we're in Seminole Heights now, in the special Seminole Heights zoning district. This specific site, which is in green, is in the Seminole Heights Residential, which is a single-family zoning district for Seminole Heights. The existing building on site was, well, actually, I'll just show you the site. We're just transitioning the pictures. Here's the existing building on site, it was constructed in 1924, and the last use of the property was an appliance repair shop. The applicants are executing the adaptive reuse policy to retain the existing structure but to use it for residential purposes. They're asking for eight total, I believe, eight total dwelling units for multifamily. This is the side lot of the subject property where the parking lot will go in, I'll show you in a second. Surrounding the property is single-family houses. This is directly to the east, that planned development for a lot split. Further to the east, across the street, these are all across the street, single-family houses, and then directly to the west. This property is approximately three lots, I'm sorry, four lots down from North Florida So because they're asking for a planned development, there is a site plan specifically that is going to be approved, that would be approved with associated waivers. Again, the existing structure will remain as is, and the, it will be converted from the old appliance store to a residential development, multifamily, eight dwelling units in that building. They are providing parking, five parking spaces along the west property line, part of the Seminole Heights parking code. You're allowed to count a number of motorcycle parkings as an equivalent to one car parking space, as well as there's a trade-off for a series of bicycle parking spaces that can also count for a car parking space. So for this development, based on the Seminole Heights code, there's eight parking spaces required. They are providing five as regular vehicular parking, one full space with a series of motorcycle parking, and then also bicycle parking. So they are providing seven full parking spaces. However, they are one short, so they need a waiver to reduce the parking from eight spaces to seven. The next two waivers have to do with Seminole Heights specific code. The code says the, is a build-to line of 40 feet, based on the development pattern, the averaging on the lots. The house to the east is set relatively far back, this house is set relatively close to the west, you have to take an average of those to establish this build-to line. However, we are dealing with an existing building. So it does not meet the 40-foot build-to line, it is 20 feet from the property line. So that is a waiver that needs to be approved. Similarly, the code says that parking has to be behind the build-to line in order to get as much vehicular parking on-site as possible. They're asking for a waiver to have a portion of this parking space forward the building And then the last waiver that they are requesting, which is the fourth, to 2721113E2, the western property line, because this development is up against, the parking is up against a single-family residence, is required to have a six-foot-high fence or wall with a hedges, and they're asking, within one feet, they're asking to just be able to put up a six-foot-high wall or fence and with no hedge, because there's only a one-foot distance in there, and that's not adequate space to plant hedges for buffering. So those are all waivers. So there are four waivers to the Seminole Heights. Standards, however, the urban design staff did find this consistent. Land development found it consistent, there's just a couple minor changes to the site plan between first and second reading. The transportation department found it inconsistent again because of the parking waiver for the one spot. And natural resources just had some general comments of when they go to permitting. So overall, the development review and compliance staff did find it inconsistent because of the parking waiver from eight spaces down to seven. Do you have any questions?
Any question for staff?
No, thank you.
Good evening. Sue Murphy, P&amp;M Consulting Group. I'm here on behalf of petitioners, or the owners, Nikki and Stephen Coteur. They are a long-term residents of Seminole Heights, and some of the major pioneers in the development of a lot of the adaptive reuse of a lot of buildings in Seminole Heights. The property we're talking about today, as it's been shown by staff, is this site right here, and it sits along Flori, this is the back of the building, it's along Florida Avenue. The building, under the adaptive reuse of historic structures, we're not allowed to expand the building or change it. So the building is where the building is, and it's not going to get any smaller or any larger when it gets redone. So that is really what has triggered a lot of the need for the waivers Mary discussed, is trying to bring a very old constructed, very, a site that was constructed a long time ago into compliance with today's regulations. And obviously, they were very, very different 70 years ago than they are today. So we're, we're doing the best we can to bring this into compliance. The building was built for and has historically always used as an industrial building. So when you look at the pictures of the building here, and by the way, there's a major bus route here in terms of like other options for transportation here. It goes downtown and it goes up to the university. But this was the building when they purchased, oops, let me get it somewhere where you can see it. That's the building when they purchased it, and it has all kinds of industrial and non-residential type commercial vehicles on it, and no, no parking spaces at all. They have cleaned the site up while they, since after purchasing it, and they have, we don't know whose car that is, by the way, it was just on the property when we went over to take pictures. But they've taken all the trash off the site, there was a lot of debris back here that they've cleaned out, and cleaned the building up to the, you know, as a holding facility, holding for the time being. This is posed, rendering of what it should look like after, at the end. Once again, we can't change the building in terms of adding on to it or anything, we can only renovate it. But this would be the parking and some green space in front of it. We think it would be a great improvement to the situation that's out there now. It would be furthering provisions, the Seminole Heights Vision Plan that was adopted in the Comprehensive Plan, be furthering your ability to provide more affordable housing in Seminole Heights and Phil Housing. This would be structured to target more young professionals, teachers, people of that, in that income bracket, who would, might need, can't afford to buy their own home yet. But there's a real shortage of moderately priced, affordable, I don't mean Section Eight housing, I'm talking moderately priced private sector housing. So it's, it's an opportunity to do this. The Coteurs have done several of these. I have, going to hand you in a series, some handouts. One is, just I'll go through them with you now. One is the Facebook statement of support from the Civic Association, and I'm not sure if anyone's here to speak in support or opposition tonight, but this was posted. Pictures of the before and after the building, a brief biography of the Coteurs, pointing out the things they've done in Seminole Heights. They are lifelong residents of Tampa and been in Seminole Heights almost 20 years. And also, I've provided you a, some pictures of the other apartments that they have rehabbed in the, in the area, that are all about the same size and scale. We are, we do concur with the staff report and have no, no changes, no request of changes to anything in that. We'd be happy, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I ask that I hold any remaining time for rebuttal if I need it. These are also eight one-bedroom apartments.
All right. Any questions from council? Anyone in the public which should speak on...